Okay, we'll go on to claims. Anything do we find unusual? Or I think pretty much that's all we're talking about. Treasurer report?
Yes, to date, the general state aid plus the TIR money is flowing. Still waiting for the fourth categorical payment from last year. And then, of course, we'll have four categorical payments that will be due to the district this year, or five total payments. So, and then also, our budget hearing is next Thursday, September 20th. There must be four board members present. I know that Mr. Turner will not be here, but we do have to meet guidelines as Mrs. German did indicate that the budget that was shown at the finance committee meeting has to be certified and then sent to the downtown file with the clerk and then filed with the State Department of Education. Following that meeting, Mrs. German will go over the AFR. Mr. Mathias will be here in October to talk about the AFR, so this will be the opportunity for her to go through the AFR. So when Mr. Mathias does his presentation, you'll be familiar with the district's AFR in terms of that. The AFR is the annual financial report. That is our audit coming from Lydely Hooper, Mathias and Knopf. And then he will be here for the October meeting.
Okay, we'll move on to consideration of overnight.
Yes, I'm very excited about the opportunity, a couple opportunities for our FFA program. They will be attending the national convention in Louisville, Kentucky. But this year it's kind of unique. The Taylorville Life Stop Judging Team has been invited to participate in Denver, Colorado. That's a new opportunity for our students. And Mrs. Schaefer included in your packet has also included that in your packet for those, and the administration recommends that you approve those. That's it on the consent agenda.
Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Ms. Ebert, a second. Mr. Turner, go call.
Mr. Curtin? Mrs. Ebert?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Yes.
Mr. Millen?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes. All right, we'll continue on to new business, which will be THS Career Day.
Yes, Mrs. Glenn is here on behalf of the Taylorville High School Guidance Department. They have done just an outstanding job in putting together. I will let, I will not steal their thunder, but I'm extremely proud of this opportunity that our students will have at Taylorville High School.
Yes, so, our career day is going to be on Wednesday, October 3rd, and we're going to start out, we're going to have a one o'clock dismissal schedule to follow in the morning, and then after the lunches have gone through, we will start out with Patrick Wampler, who is the owner of Jimmy John's, and he'll be our keynote speaker. And then after that, we have four 35-minute sessions where we have right around 100 speakers from different careers. There's, there are 16 career clusters that, that we try to hit upon, and we have representatives from at least a few of each of those clusters. So, we're really excited about that. And then, we also have, out of those 100 speakers, we have 30 who are graduate, graduates from THS. So we're really excited to have those who will back in the building to help expose our students to all the different types of careers that are out there and available to them. And having seen graduates from THS too, we think that would be exciting for them as well. Does anybody have any questions?
You're welcome to attend if you're available.
Yes, absolutely. We love to have you guys come.
This is something that is will be October 3rd.
How are you going to fit 100 speakers in a 435-minute?
That's what I was thinking. So, we have, we're going to structure it sort of as breakout sessions. So, the teachers will be in their classrooms, and we have the speakers coming to their classrooms. And so, the students will, like the regular day, they'll come around to the different, they will actually get to sign up for their own sessions. So we have, one of my former '99 graduates is helping us out. He's a computer programmer, and so he's created a program for the students to be able to pick and choose their different sessions that they want to go to. And so, we're going to be doing that starting next week. And then, they'll get to go around and go to the different, we, I think we only have, we have four or five teachers that don't have anything scheduled, and they're going to go around and take the presenters to the classes, you know, show the people around. But other than that, we really have everything pretty much full, maybe four or five open slots, but the whole building will be full that day with presenters and students hopefully learning a lot from them.
Very good. Every student has to sign up.
Yes, every student has to sign up for four sessions.
The attendance will be taken.
Yes.
All the little things we were worried about.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Glenn.
You're welcome.
So you're interested to hear about it after the fact?
Yes, absolutely. We'll take lots of pictures, too.
Okay, district website and apps. Kuntzman?
Kuntzman? Do you want a demo of it, or do you want to just explain?
That'd be great. Because you're going to need it for the video anyway, so you might as well call it up.
So, as you remember, back in the spring, we discussed going to a new webpage simply because our old webpage was not ADA compliant. So what that means is if somebody with disabilities wants to come to our webpage, they need to be able to tab across different things. And if you have certain programs to help you read it, when you like move your mouse over the top of a picture, it'll tell you what the picture is and things like that. So we went with the company School Messenger, which also does our, our calling system. They have presence webpages, and it allows us to be ADA compliant, so. It also makes it so that if you view it on a tablet or a phone, it resizes it correctly. Our old webpage wasn't very friendly as far as that goes, so the newer version is, is much better. So here's kind of our new webpage, our new main page. Most of the webpages are all the same, the district school pages, they all have the same kind of main things, you know, parents and staff, community links and different athletics and things of that nature. So, it looks very nice, we're very pleased with it. The app is still, they ran into a few glitches. We had to have the webpage completely done before the app could be completed. The app basically has a lot of links to the webpage now that it's more mobile friendly. So students will be able to, and parents will be able to, from the app, instantly go to Skyward, instantly look at the daily bulletins, instantly look at the calendars and things like that without having to go to the webpage or things like that. But that is the webpage. And you simply go up here and select school. We can go to, you know, show you all the different schools. Here's Memorial School. Those are the code.org kids, by the way. And they did coding in elementary, they, those are the prize winners.
Oh, yeah.
Nice name. So, nice little pictures that scrolls through and stuff like that. So the principals have, you know, little blurbs in there, upcoming events and things like that. So it's, each building chose their own, each principal chose their own theme, so kind of their own look and feel. So you'll see every building is a little bit different. They all stick with the same colors, purple and gold for the most part. Again, it slides through all the different pictures of that. Again, students, parents, staff, all of that's pretty much the same on all of them. And again, they all have, we've really tried to incorporate the pictures, a lot more pictures of the students working and things like that. We're working more on the social media aspects as far as Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, things like that. So you'll see more and more of those links popping up on the district and each building's webpage, as you can see Stonyford's PTA Facebook say pages right there. Again, that's the pictures of the new STEM lab. So again, if you pull it up on your phone, it, it resizes it automatically and looks, looks really nice. And again, that same look and feel, students, parents, staff, for all of them. And then finally, the junior. Any questions about the webpage?
Is it up and running now?
Yes, yep, it's fully running. It's been running for about, since I think the very first day of school almost is when we had it run. We were trying to get it done before registration. It just, timing wise, we couldn't get some of the things finalized on their end either, so. That is the school webpage. And it's real simple, it's just the TCUSD3.org, same as everybody's email addresses. And I'll pull it up. Lots of good information out there. We've tried to, tried to really keep it updated. Kathy Oaks and Continental have done a great job. They're kind of in charge of most of the updating, along with the principals. They've been working really diligently to keep it updated, and that's our goal this year, is to make sure our webpage and our presence out on the internet is, is more updated. I can't show you the app because it's still in development, but they said, they told me last week, but of course, you know how that goes. They said middle next week, so if I don't, I mean, I don't know where at they're, I can call. But it is compatible with both iPhones and Samsungs. So whether you have a Google phone or an iPhone, it'll, you can download the app, and it's in both the i, i stores and Google Play stores.
And it'll be free.
Yep, the app is free, yeah. It's really simple. It just has a picture, I think, of the, our logo in the background, and then I think there's eight icons on the front, Skyward, obviously for the parents, calendar of events, sports, I think they have athletics, and daily bulletins.
Yeah.
And I can't remember what the, I think food service is one of them, so the kids can look up, you know, what, what the menu is for the day and so forth. That's our webpage.
Right here. Now, you want me to go into the video?
Yeah, the, the next thing is, this video's still a work in progress. Kyle Kuntzman, who's a 2016 graduate, is at SIUE, and he's working on a degree in, in this area. And I asked him to put together a video on behalf of the district. We have other plans to go specifically with the high school, but this is a, a, our first shot at a video, video that we're going to post on our website once we refine this. But he's done a really nice job here in terms of defining the Taylorville School District, so we got the speakers on.
Yep, and he started in the spring of last year, so unfortunately, one of the things is we don't have the new turf, some of the new, the new STEM lab and some of the new things.
We're going to get it, we're going to capture that.
So, you'll probably see a revised version of this.
Yep.
Taylorville, Illinois, home to nearly 12,000 different people, some young, some old. For some, this is the place they grew up, and for some, they travel in every year and find a new place to call home. Either way, this is a place we all call home. Home is where the heart is, some say, and this city has plenty of people with heart. The drive and passion of these thousands of people push us all to better ourselves. And how better than to start with our youth, from grade school to graduation. Taylorville School District focuses on just that, bettering ourselves. From new technology, new friends, new memories and new ideas, it is rare to see a town come together to help students succeed like they do here in Taylorville. But the growing doesn't stop here. This, this is just the stepping stone in the right direction of making our youth smarter, stronger and more prepared for their futures, whether that be here or in a large city. We want our students to grow, succeed and have the best possibilities available. So join us in growing, growing as a community, right here in Taylorville, a great place to learn.
At Dr. Green, First and Al, Superintendent of Taylorville Community Unit School District Number Three, with the passage of school funding reform from the state of Illinois and the passage of a referendum in April of 2017, the district is really poised to move forward and be able to provide a quality educational experience for all of its students. As, as one looks at the history of the school district with the passage of the countywide incentive sales tax, the Taylorville School District has been able to activate facilities and to meet today's educational needs. And with the community support, really shows that the community in the Taylorville School District really wants good opportunities for their students into the future. And I think that's really the building point as to what makes Taylorville a special school district, is that it is able to have the revenues and the means to provide great opportunities for our students.
I am Brandy Greeley, former principal of North Elementary School. I've been in the district for 14 years, and this is my first year as curriculum director for the Taylorville School District. The mission of the Taylorville Community Unit School District Number Three is to have each student acquire knowledge, skills and values for a lifelong learning and a changing world through cooperative efforts of a caring staff, involved family and a supportive community. What does that mean? The mission statement is on a broad spectrum that answers three questions. Why do we do it? What are we doing? And to whom are we doing this? The answer is very clear, that is for our students. We want a community of students learning together. This comes in a variety of platforms. We have STEM that spans all grade levels and all subject areas. We even have STEM that begins in the gym at our elementary level with the help of our PE teachers. We have our students reaching the community through public speaking presentations, music festivals and art award ceremonies. This highlights our students' gifts and talents in a variety of ways. We have students who are able to design robots. We begin coding at a younger age, and through the help of Maki Maki, we have our students practicing engineer efforts. All of this starts with even our youngest learners. We are incorporating various thematic units for students to learn about various cultures and the world around them, highlighting different ethnicities and cultures. So what does this mean, our mission statement? It encompasses all of those things I just spoke of, but it also talks about what we do and what it matters, and it matters tremendously.
My name is Mr. Andrew, and I'm the seventh grade science teacher at Taylorville Junior High School, and I'm also teaching eighth grade Project Lead the Way. With seventh grade, we do environmental science, we do cells, we do weather, as we do lots of stuff, everything. They have all of that on the Z space. They have the Oculus where we could do virtual reality with it. I love the, the Elmo stations with the group projects. That's one of my favorite things, kids, whenever they're in their groups by themselves, they kind of work in certain ways and there's a direct leader. Once you get them in the Elmo stations and they could put it on the screen and everybody gets to see each other's stuff, it's not so much of, hey, we're just on this one person's stuff, I get to share more openly. So it becomes more of a group project instead of, I'm the leader and here's what we're doing. So we use this for, like I said, for lots of different things, not just one. So as soon as they walk in here, they look around, they're at school, but they don't feel like they're at school, so they're taking all this different stuff in. They're not just sitting in the room, they're not just, Google, yes, we got our room, we got our books, we got everything else, but now they got tons of more stuff to learn from, tons of more stuff. They got bouncing off, work on the board together with six other people working with it on the Z space where 3D images are coming out at them, which in any other city, in many other schools across the world, they don't get that. So, I like to say it's a field trip, but inside your school. We can, we get to go on field trips every week.
Taylorville High School offers a variety of educational opportunities for students. We do have unique classes, do have booths. We offer a variety of vocational classes for students. We send students out to Lincoln Lane College for their next level education courses. We have courses for CACC, CEO, something that we've offered here for the past three years, and it's been very beneficial to getting students an opportunity to learn the business world, how business works, and hopefully bring those students back to Taylorville to promote business here in our community. We have two major projects. One is the, is the turf field, which will be done soon. That's going to be something that's very beneficial for, for all of our athletic teams to, to utilize. I think the community is going to be really impressed by what they see with that. But educationally, our STEM lab, STEM tech lab is, is really coming along, and that is really going to be the educational showcase for our school and our district. We have the largest FFA program south of Chicago, doing very well, again, what a time, effort and energy is put into that, not only by our student population, but also by our staff members that, that help coordinate that Sue Schaefer and Katie Keen do a lot of, they put in countless hours, but not just those two. FFA is a community thing where community members assist with that. But, you know, most of that is, is on the students, the students put forth a lot of work in their essay and projects. It's not just here during the school year, that, that is something that continues throughout the summer as well. So they, they work very hard and they get lots of, we're very fortunate, we get a lot, we get a lot of awards for that, so they're doing a very good job for that. My hope for Taylorville Community Unit School District Number Three is that we continue to offer the opportunities for success that we have here in the past couple of years. We've done a wonderful job of providing opportunities for students, and I would love for us to continue to do that. We are in a wonderful position. We have a caring, caring staff that want our students to succeed. We have a supportive community that wants our schools to do very well and produce students that, that are going to be very productive in no matter what area they choose to go, whether it's to further their education at a junior college or a college, or to go to a trade school, or to just get a job in the community working. We have several students that, you know, joined the military, which is, is fantastic as well. So we have lots of opportunities for students. We want to continue to develop and create opportunities for students to be successful.
When I first arrived at the Taylorville School District in the summer of 2006, and looking at the calendar, the music festival is always something that happens every spring in the Taylorville School District, and it is continuing to do so today. It's steeped in deep tradition. If you look at the quality of musicians that have come through the Taylorville Music Program that have been quite successful professionally in, in their careers with music, many of them got their beginnings at Taylorville, within the Taylorville Music Department, and then the music festival allows them to showcase their talents to the entire community. The thing that makes the music festival special is, is that we allow our elementary students to also participate with our junior high students and our high school students. So it really truly is a well-rounded music festival. It is a festival of, of successes and opportunities to showcase our fine talents of our students to our public.
The music festival is obviously a community-supported endeavor with all, all schools participating, all schools getting together. It's, it's really remarkable to see all of the schools, the students and the community fill up the West Gym at Taylorville High School and play the variety of musics from the elementary on it to the high school, really showcasing their talents and abilities. And obviously, you know, we end the night with, you know, Battle of the Republic, where not only are the students singing, but you can look around, you know, West Gym, you can see people singing as well. It's a pretty, a pretty powerful statement as far as music goes in our community, and they work very hard for that.
You know, I, I, I'm extremely proud to serve as the Superintendent of Taylorville Community Unit School District Number Three, and the staff and the students that, that we have that work and attend at Taylorville School District. But more importantly, the community of Taylorville that has provided the support to the school district and the direction that the school district wants to go. And I really think that as we end this documentary, we really want to showcase the outstanding, the outstanding things that are happening within the Taylorville School District. That's extremely important that we're able to document that and show that, that Taylorville is a great school district.
As Dr. First and Al said, Taylorville Community School District is a district that thrives off of the wonderful staff, students and community that surrounds it. So please join in continuing to better the education for the students here in the city of Taylorville, a great place to learn.
There you have it. And we will be refining it with that. We hope to be able to use that video and clip as we utilize this for this school district.
All right, we move on to the board consideration of the 1819 annual report.
Yeah. Yeah, we need a motion to approve that we submit this data within the I- Yeah, we need, uh, a motion to approve, uh, that we submit this data within the Iowa's through the State Board of Education website. Uh, we have to, uh, recognize Memorial North and Stonington Elementary Schools, Taylorville Junior High School and Taylorville High Schools, uh, so that we can submit this to the State Board of Education prior to December, September 30th deadline.
We have a motion. Ms. Marver, a second. Mrs. Ebert. Please, please, please vote all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Okay. Consideration of hazardous walkways.
Yes, in your packet is the list of the hazardous walkways. Pretty much, uh, we have to include these areas, uh, that, um, that students live within less than 1.5 miles from the school, uh, may be transported in the district receiving reimbursement. Those are the tracks that, uh, are the areas that we have, uh, that we can transport. As you know, that state law says you must live two miles, uh, but we do make exceptions for hazardous walkways. So, we just need board.
Do you have a motion? Okay. We need a motion. Mr. Turner, second. Ms. Marver, all in favor?
Aye, all opposed.
Motion carries. Review of the 1819 enrollment.
Yes, I included in your packet the K through four enrollment. Stands at 775 students, down 22 students from last year. The fifth through eighth grade enrollment is 781 students, up one student from last year. 912 enrollment is 795, up eight students from last year. Total K5 enrollment is 2351, down 13 students from last year. The preschool enrollment is, stands at 115 students, it's down 33 students. Total PK enrollment is 2477, down 46 students, as I indicated at an earlier meeting. Uh, the preschool enrollment is, is following suit with our kindergarten projection for next year. Uh, as one looks at the births from the Illinois Department of Public Health, um, that shows the difference of the births from 13 to 14 constitute that, uh, constitute that decrease, um, in, in terms of that. So, um, that's where we are with our enrollment. And as you know, that the enrollment is taken, uh, they will do account in October and one in March, um, for the evidence-based funding, uh, with that situation. So, that is the district enrollment as was reported prior to the board agenda.
All right. Mr. Millian, have a report on finance meeting?
Um, yes, we met on August 20th, and, um, most of the meeting was presented by Mrs. German. She gave tentative budget, um, and then also went over reviewing, um, how the budget's built every year as far as how we start each year and each fund with balances and so forth. She did a good job of spending about 45 minutes explaining everything, so, I don't know if there's anything else that you want to add, Mrs. German, but that was the crux of it.
Yeah.
It was a good meeting.
All right, um, who, Mrs. McConnell lives in our here, so, um, you want to just talk down?
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. McConnell isn't here, so Dr. Firstnow will talk about the curriculum committee meeting.
Yeah, that, uh, meeting was, was held. Mrs. Brewley was in charge of that meeting that evening. Uh, the district did review its, uh, S requirements. It also discussed part scores. Um, and then each of the building principals also gave a report on things that were happening within the buildings and their programs at that point in time. That's pretty much what it, what it involved.
All right, we'll move on to the, uh, building committee. Mr. Turner?
Yeah, we met out at the high school and, uh, we did a walkthrough on some of the capital projects and things that we looked on this year. Basically, the cafeteria hot water project, uh, is gonna reduce our energy costs. Uh, the new boilers, a similar situation there with the new boilers being put in. And we got a little snuck in, got a little look at the STEM lab, which is kind of funny. Had Dr. Firstnow, uh, do a budget presentation on the O and M budgets for this year and also looking at our projections over the next couple of years. We had a little bit of a discussion over the 2019, 2020 and 2020, 21 capital projects, mostly focusing on, uh, one of the things is the replacement windows at the Taylorville Junior High School. Want to look at that in a two-phase project, uh, get that out for the bid, uh, aluminum frames, we want to get in there before we have any more increases. But knew that it's a two-phase project and concentrate on the, uh, north and west corner. That's where our biggest heat losses are at first. And then, uh, it was a motion to adjourn my Mr. Millian, seconded by me, and we voted on that, and then we're out of there.
Could, we did discuss, though, about open meetings to discuss if Stonington's gonna close next year. You said we have some public meetings.
Yeah, we'll set.
Can we schedule those?
We'll set that, some of those tonight, yeah.
Good.
Oh, we'll wait till, okay.
Well, I thought we had to have two meetings, and Dr. Firstnow, you said you had to let staff know by December. Will that give us enough time?
Yeah, you'll have still October, November.
Okay.
Okay, um, at this time, I need a motion to go in close for the, uh, person, Mr. Millian, make a motion, second. Ms. Marver, all in favor? The votes will be to go in close session. All right, the board is back in open session, and we now need a motion to accept personnel. Mr. Turner, a second. Mr. Curtin, roll call.
Mr. Curtin? Mrs. Ebert?
Yes.
Mrs. Marver? Miss State? Mr. Millian?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes. All right, now we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Yes, I'm happy to report that, um, uh, our junior high was well represented at the STEM Fair. Uh, Mrs. Miller and, uh, Mrs. Rindell and Mr. Koontzman and our students did a great job showing off Z space at, uh, at Rochester STEM Fair. Taylorville High School, the STEM lab is complete. We did get our materials in, our tables in, so, uh, Taylorville High School STEM lab is, is operational, uh, as we speak. And, uh, we will be scheduling a media night, uh, for that as well. Other than that, that is all I have. Oh, yes, and we need a building committee meeting, scheduled on October 1st.
October, Monday.
Yep.
Here.
Yep.
What time? Here, same, I check the schedule.
Seven, seven. No, seven.
Yep. One thing I wanted to add about the, uh, this, uh, junior high going to Rochester is, uh, Taylorville's table was the most viewed table there with, with all the STEM stuff. So, it was pretty exciting to know that there was all these other people presenting and they were lined up to hear Taylorville's story, so, that's what I had. Okay, um, any other meetings that we need to make tonight?
No.
The 20th, we know we have to be back.
20th is a big one.
Yep, September 20th.
And at 6:45 is the public, and then we're at 7, right?
Yep, the hearing at 6:45, and then the finance committee at 7.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Ebert, second. Mr. Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, we're done.